All right, good evening. The time being 7:00 PM on May 9th, 2022. All members of the planning board being present. Call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from April 25th, 2022. Motion on the meeting, uh, minutes, in turn?
Yeah, motion to accept the meeting, the minutes of April 25th, 2022.
All right, motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to agenda item B, committee reports administrative actions. Uh, there any committee reports that any members wish to make at this time?
Sure.
Mr. Fowler?
I think it'd be, I think we all know it, but, uh, with the long journey that we took, a lot, a lot of members on this board and, uh, others throughout the town, both the zoning board, zoning bylaw subcommittee, approaching six years, it passed overwhelmingly to the satisfaction of myself, I'm sure Mr. Chairman, and Alex, or, and I want to compliment her for her fantastic job, not to embarrass her, but her fantastic job putting a lot of things together at the last minute, uh, just so that we would have no questions unanswered, and I appreciate that. So, I can't say any more than that, but, uh, thank you, everybody, not only the people here, but the people who, uh, supported us and supported, uh, the changes that we thought were, that we know were beneficial to the town. That's all.
Excellent. Any other, uh, committee reports?
Not at the time.
Okay. Moving on to town planners report. Slouder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just to actually piggyback off of Mr. Fowler's comments, um, the zoning bylaw rewrite did in fact pass at town meeting 121 to 1. We still haven't figured out who that 1 is yet.
I know exactly what was, I saw.
He abstained from the map vote, so we'll never know.
Yes.
But, in any case, um, if anybody has any questions, um, about how the new zoning bylaw affects their property, or what kind of projects can come into town, um, feel free to drop me a line, and I do want to note that the bylaw, while under the review of the Attorney General, is still considered in effect as of May 4th. The only caveat is, is that any applicants wishing to proceed with projects filed after annual town meeting will be operating under the new bylaw, but there is a chance that something could get thrown out by the AG after the review. We'll probably get it back around August. The likelihood of that is pretty low, and, you know, if it wouldn't be an outright, you know, throw it out the window, it might just be, you know, you can only come up to this line and you tried to go over here. So, um, for all intents and purposes, that bylaw's in full effect, and if anybody has any questions, they can let me know. Um, next item, uh, no new updates on the Main Street sidewalks at this time, however, the Fisk Street sidewalk project is coming along, and that'll be in front of the Conservation Commission this week on, uh, May 11th. An update to last meeting with the Asbils, I have requested the maturation report for the bonds that we're still holding on various projects from the town treasurer. She's going to be sending me the April report, so we'll have a, um, a more accurate idea of how much is being held for each project at this point. I have already had a few, um, project engineers reach out with updates as to some of the outstanding Asbils plans, and I'm working with them closely to get them closed out as soon as possible. And due to town meeting last week, I didn't have a chance to compile all of the new information, but I hope to have it by the next meeting on the 23rd. And last but certainly not least, I'm sure, um, everybody here and at home has heard that Treehouse Brewery has, uh, made their intention known to purchase the Tuxbury Country Club from the Ginsburgs. Um, I encourage folks to visit their website. They have a custom URL, that's treehouse.com/helloTuxbury, and they'll, you'll learn a lot about their company, and, you know, what their plans are for the future. And just speaking personally, I'm really excited to have a great organization choose Tuxbury. This is a, a company with a really good reputation everywhere they go, and they do a lot of nice work, and I'm just looking forward to working with them. That's all.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to agenda item C, oh, I'm sorry, just to let everybody know, um, agenda item D, 160, 170 River Road, the applicant has requested to be continued to our next meeting. So if you're watching, or planning to come down, or if you're in the room, and you were here for that, uh, you do not have to keep watching or stay, because we will not hear anything on that one. Uh, so returning to agenda item C, 60 Highland View Road, uh, this is a continuation from our April 25th meeting.
For the record, Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering, 12 George Street, Lowell, Mass. So, uh, we're here for a continued, uh, public hearing, uh, related to 60 Highland View Ave. I wanted to, uh, present this evening the, um, foot candles contouring plan, uh, that's a requirement of the, um, site plan regulations, and we have provided that, um, uh, Lumen's foot candle, uh, contouring, uh, map, and I've also provided cut sheets, uh, for that as well. And as you can see on the, on the foot candles, uh, plan, there'll be no, um, emittance of any lighting, uh, from the facility itself, and I wanted to, um, present that tonight. Okay. Does anybody have any questions regarding that plan?
Nobody has anything on the lighting, right? Is this good?
No.
No, we're good.
Additionally, um, we've been, uh, going back and forth with, um, some planned revisions with the engineering department, um, the majority of which, uh, have been satisfied. Um, there is a, an issue with a drainage structure, uh, that was installed on the property. Um, essentially what it is, is, is the repurposing of, um, two bridge abutments, which are going to be utilized to help detain the water, uh, within the system itself, but all the treatment of the water is being facilitated with, um, these specialized, um, catch basin systems, and it's also being infiltrated, uh, on the site, uh, through additional subsurface, subsurface infiltration systems. Since our last meeting, uh, one of the requirements was that we go out and perform some additional testing, which we did in fact do that. Essentially on the entire site, we have, uh, we have film material, and then we have, um, the sand material beneath, uh, the film material. Uh, the town engineer, uh, one of the requirements per the stormwater, uh, management, uh, regulations is that you do an actual test pit where the system's going to be located. We did four test pits on either end and on either side. Um, he says that technically doesn't meet the stormwater requirements, but we're, um, confident on the underlying material, but, um, we're not going to be taking credit for infiltration within the system, so the system just handles water to come through the system and then it exits out of the system. One of his additional requirements, uh, was a certification, uh, which we provided a certification. He just wants an additional certification from the bridge manufacturing company, the company that actually, uh, constructs these bridge abutments, to show that they can be utilized for drainage purposes. These are, um, top-of-the-line concrete bridge abutments, um, so we're confident that we're going to be able to get that from the manufacturer. It's just a very high grade, as you can imagine, for a bridge abutment, it's a very high-grade concrete consistency with these structures, so we're confident we're going to be able to get additional sign-off on that. But we're also running into a time constraint with the, um, with the folks who, uh, want to come in here and, uh, build the building on the site. They're currently, uh, preparing construction drawings, and what we're hoping to get tonight is a conditional approval, because as you know, even after we get an approval from the planning board, we still go through construction drawings with the town engineer, and that nothing can be built without the town engineer's approval, uh, prior to construction. And where we're, um, where we know what the underlying soils are, we know that it can support the drainage systems that are provided, we have additional area within the site to provide additional drainage systems if needed, uh, we're hoping to get a, uh, conditional approval so that the appeal periods can start to take their course, while the, um, folks that are designing this, the building for the, uh, facility can continue doing what they're doing, knowing that they have a conditional approval, and that everything will coincide with the construction or approval from the building department, once we get final approval from the engineering department. Additionally, uh, we have some waivers that have been, uh, requested, um, that are outlined in a, in a letter in response to Ms. Louder's, um, review of the, uh, application for special We can walk through those if necessary. Uh, one of them was the scale of the drawing, which we're requesting a waiver for. Um, we know that we need to add the, um, the building coverage, uh, to the plan. Uh, the maximum building coverage in this district is 35%, and this building is 30%. So it is compliant, it just needs a note added to the plan. There was a note, um, uh, showing signage for the building. The company has not completed what would be their signage for the, for the building itself. We would come in separately, uh, like, uh, we have in the past, once the signage gets completed and the sign company has, uh, provided all the specifications, we would come back before the planning board for the actual signage. Uh, landscaping, um, we're going to landscape the property, um, but we were asking for a waiver to the landscaping plan, that would be necessary, but we can come back in with a landscape plan once the landscaper has been, um, chosen for the project and come up with a landscape, um, proposal, which we could come back in to the planning board prior to the end of construction at that point. Uh, most of the sides are just riprap sides, and there's one, there's three small areas in front of the building which can be, uh, two small areas which can be landscaped. The center island is composed of a, um, of a, um, transformer, so we won't be able to landscape the middle island, but the two sides would be able to be landscaped. The lighting requirements, we've provided a smittle for that, which was, uh, comment Um, one of the recommendations which, uh, was made was the solid fencing, uh, along the side of the abutter. Uh, that fencing has been added to the plan in a detail. Um, it's going to be just along the west of the side, the entire length, uh, to those residential, uh, properties. One other waiver, uh, was, there's a question on the, the close proximity of the two curb cuts that are accessing this property, um, that those two curb cuts made a nice flow. First of all, this island is here now, but having the two curb cuts enabled a nice flow for the fire truck to come in and through the property. Um, this, uh, sweat path analysis has been shown to the fire department, uh, through, uh, two separate IDR hearings, and one of the comments in the town engineer's comments is that, you know, shouldn't the fire truck be able to get to the rear of the building? Uh, that was one of the first questions I asked Lieutenant Sewicki at a, at one of the first IDR meetings, and, um, he, Lieutenant Sewicki has provided comments, but in those comments never indicated that he needed to get to the rear of the prop, the rear of the building. This building's also going to be sprinkled, by the way, but that's these two curb cuts here. There's an additional filing fee, uh, which we made to Ms., uh, the planning department, And there's going to be an, uh, operation and maintenance, uh, for the facility, which is included in our stormwater report. Um, the, uh, Zordi group was here, um, about a month ago, and talked about the operation, uh, at that meeting, and, uh, if there's anything additional to that, we most certainly could provide that as a condition as well.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Start with Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I want to start off by saying I like this proposal very much. I like the idea of what they want to do down there, so whatever I say after this is by no means in reference to the final product on-site. What I'm concerned about is how we got here. I'd like to ask you a couple of questions, Mr. Hammer. All set?
Sure.
When you first presented this plan to us, we were aware at that time, way back when, that system had been, was on-site, ready to be installed, or partially installed, or whatever. I've heard all kinds of rumors. And it was installed and not inspected. Is that a fair statement?
Uh, that's my understanding, yes. And I did know it was install.
Did you, at that time, did you tell us that, when you first submitted this to us?
Uh, yes, I did.
You did?
Yes, it was, uh, always been on the plans. Um, I, in no way, uh, was avoiding discussing it. Uh, I would think that during my initial presentation, when describing the existing conditions on the site, I would have indicated that that system had, was installed.
Well, I'm going to have to review the minutes, uh, because that's a little bit news to us, to me anyways. Do you expect us today to vote on this without an approval from town engineer and the fire department?
Well, the town engineer's essentially has said in his comments that, um, the system will have to be pulled out and then put back in, so he can see the system go in.
So, that doesn't answer my question.
Well, that's what his comment is on his comments, so the design isn't going to change.
But yet, you want us to vote on this tonight?
I, I, I'm requesting that you would conditionally approve the project based on ultimately getting the town engineer's approval. I'm not asking you to approve something that the town engineer wouldn't approve.
And what about the fire department?
Well, the fire department has already provided comments, uh, for this project, has not, uh, provided comments, uh, denying the project. Um, we have comments from the fire department, some of which contradict the, um, the curb cut regulations that the town has for, uh, projects coming into public roadways, which we, um, made the modifications, responded to those comments, and there's nothing in, um, Lieutenant Sewicki's comments that he originally provided that haven't been provided on this plan. And the, the one issue that the town engineer had brought up was, does the fire department need to get to the rear of the building? And that comment was never provided by the fire department. And we provided that, the sweat path analysis, um, back in March to the town.
Why do you think it took us so long to get to this point?
Um, you know, this is, this typically takes us long.
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't.
To, to go through, um, engineering comments, and, um, there has been, um, a little bit of a delay, I believe there wasn't, was there, uh, a point where there wasn't a quorum at one point? I'm not sure, I can't recall, but, um, we've made the submission in, uh, March, and it's May, so there's been two and a half months that have gone by. The, the site hasn't changed that much. What's changing, the head change was, uh, the addition of some, um, drainage controls, which were requested by the engineering department, which we did. We're not in disagreement or doing something against what the town engineer is asking for, we're just going through the process like we normally would.
Well, I find it very disingenuous that you would have a plan submitted to us that A isn't finished, hasn't been approved by different aspects of the town, but you want us to conditionally approve it, which kind of gives it a shadow of a, maybe they're going to vote for this, maybe it is all right, and that's not the, the case. It's not the case at all.
If that's, if that's the way you feel, then, you know, we, we can continue, so I just...
That's the way I feel. And I'm going to tell you, you've probably seen me, um, for a long time, have you ever heard me speak this way?
I guess not.
No? So, I'd like you to think about that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rada?
Thank you. Um, a few things, um, over and above, um, I'll echo Mr. Fowler's, uh, point, I, I'm pretty thorough when I review plans. I do not recall a plan that had a previous, uh, drainage on that. I would have brought that up. Um, so, um, you know, I, echoing what Mr. Fowler said, conditionally approving anything has always been something that I've been against. Uh, I don't like to conditionally approve anything until every department is satisfied, because I don't want to put any department against, well, the planning board voted for it, well, it was a conditional or it wasn't conditional. Uh, that's not a practice that I'd, I like to, uh, work on. A couple items, you, you talk about the, the curb cut, what you want to call a curb cut on the site currently. I don't necessarily know if that's a curb cut, I think it's just where they piled the junk versus where they didn't pile the junk and access into the property. I think they just basically decided, well, if there's a pile of junk in the middle, let's go around it. So, I don't know if that's, that's a curb cut, but...
There is a transformer there.
Well, there may be a transformer, but there's a pile of everything else there on top, uh, you know, around the site that is there, but I think, you mean, my opinion, you know, from what activity going to be coming in and out of there, I mean, there's, you know, left and right of the, the, the site for, uh, would have been the best location for that, if you, you mean, what you're bringing in. So, I, I think, you know, as far as lighting, I think that's pretty straightforward, and the question on the, the scale of the prints, I think this is coming back, why is this continuing to, we hear this a couple times now, like, we know what's going on, and the plans are specific what the town is requiring, um, I, I think everyone should know, I mean, if they're not clear, let's put them someplace that they are clear, and I'm pretty sure that everyone is clear of what...
It's in the bylaw.
No, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying, not necessarily just this one, but there has been, in the past, that people submitting plans that aren't specific, or they're not meeting the town bylaws, and I think they should be.
Mr. Chairman, could I offer, uh, just some, just some context for that? Um, 40A says we have to accept whatever gets filed, and we have to review it, so that's, yeah.
No, I understand, but then, but the bylaw asks for us to bore a specific, so I think we need to address that, so we're not having to go through this and the board grant that waiver. That's it for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I kind of echo Mr. Fowler's concerns, so, so, Mr. Hammer, you've been in front of us how many times? 30, 40 times or so maybe, if not more, with all the plans you've presented to us and so forth and so on, correct? Right? So, so I think you know we're pretty thorough as far as reviewing plans and reviewing plans and reviewing plans, so that when we finish, we think it's the best plan for the residents of Tuxbury. So, when your plan first came in, I got to tell you, I was very, very high on, on the plan, uh, bringing a new concept to Tuxbury with the strawberries and, I don't believe you ever mentioned the other fruits that were involved, the blueberries and so forth and so on, but that came in after, I believe, so, um, but I'm actually kind of sour on it now, because of the fact, you know, this is, this initial concept plan came back, came into us January 10th. Any idea when that system was installed?
It was installed last summer.
Okay.
So...
I'm willing to bet, and I, and I'm pretty savvy on the plans and so forth, that that system was never mentioned to us, once. I'm willing to bet, if we go back on the, on the details that, because I, I think if that was brought to us back then, we would have had it resolved by now, or whenever you say you brought it to us. Because I don't know how you'd think I, I mean, I personally would never approve those plans, or tentative plans, without the stormwater system that you have, and underground.
Understood. I just want to make this very clear, that I, I actually had submitted this drainage system to the town engineer last year, telling him that this was something that we were going to be proposing, okay? Um, so it's never been, um, in that, in that system, uh, I believe went through the planning office, CC to the planning office, but in no way are we, um, trying to skirt something by the town with this drainage system in any way. Um, the owner took it upon himself, uh, to, in order to save space, to put the drainage system in, to get it out of the way, because it was, these bridge abutments have always been sitting on his property, I guess, for quite some time, so I just wanted to...
If that was the case, I don't know why you wouldn't have brought that to our attention, that your plan was, or notifying us that it was in place, and your plan is to remove it all, and I think that would have cleared up everybody in the boards here, you know, uh, opinion, that, okay, you're taking the system out, why even bother testing it? I mean...
Oh, our, our intention was, um, once we realized the system was in, was to propose it to remain in the ground. Um, that's why we went out and did some additional test pitting per the town engineer's recommendations. So, um, that's, that's what's going on here. Um, the, the system is a, it's a, um, if you wanted to go over and see the system yourself, uh, you may very well, you could come over and see the system, but...
No, my, my issue, Mr. Hammer, is the fact that it was installed, was not inspected.
Right, Mr. Patel, yeah, I did not install the system, okay? So, I'm, I'm inheriting an installed system and working around that, so, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm not, this isn't... So I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm not, this isn't something that was my action on installing.
You're presenting the information on site to us.
Sure.
With a good faith, knowledge, and we kind of believe that, and then all of a sudden we get hit with the fact that, well, oh, by the way, there's a system down there now that was installed back in the summer before the plan was submitted to us. I mean, it just doesn't, doesn't sit well with me, because, I mean, I'm used to a pretty, you know, reasonable guy, but this just doesn't sit well. Mr. Fowler brought it up earlier with me, and I'm like, I mean, earlier in the meeting, and I had the same opinion, it just, you know, so I, I mean, I would never, you know, even think of going, as far as supporting it, without, first of all, the town engineer giving us his blessing, you know, to move forward, so.
Right. So just so everyone's aware of this, the system is going to remain designed the way that it is, it's just going to be replaced, it's going to be taken out, and it's going to be put back into the ground. Okay, so that's essentially what the town engineer has had. So that's, it's a good sustainable use of a concrete product. Instead of this concrete product just being wasted and ground up and disposed of, it's a good sustainable repurposing of a concrete product that's essentially going to hold a void for water. So I, it's just a good use of something that would just be just destroyed. So, but that at the end of the day will be the proposal for to repurpose that structure for the use of drainage, because it's a good use of the structure, in my opinion.
Okay. I'm also with you.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't have a lot of questions until my colleagues here asked a few, so, but I have a few now. So a couple of things. So you are talking about removing some of the concrete structures because they went in without testing the recharge area? Is that my understanding, or?
We're not, we're not going to, we're not claiming credit for recharge with the structure. It's incorporated into our design to have water go in, be detained, and then come out. So we're not taking credit for the underlying material underneath the structure for infiltration, if that, if you understand what I'm responding to your questions.
Well, you know, I really don't understand exactly, but, you know, I have a rough idea. But, you know, I mean, isn't it a requirement to do some testing in those areas?
It is. If you're going to, if you're going to use it for recharge, meaning you're going to take credit for the water to infiltrate down through the system, you're required to do soil testing for that.
So the new engineering design does not require that?
That's correct, right.
Okay. You know, I mean, initially, as I, you know, I'm new to the board, and I haven't been part of the discussions leading up to this point, I didn't have like a major problem with a couple of conditions here, but, you know, from what I'm seeing, there's quite a few, I mean, maybe you could, I mean, how many of these conditions in the engineer's report here are we talking? Are we talking all eleven of the departments for the drainage calculations? Are we talking four departments?
I was proposing to do all of them, only in that, all of those comments need to be satisfied, and they're all subsurface related. One of them was a detail related to a straw wattle that we inadvertently forgot to put on the plan for the erosion control, of which is also a requirement for conservation. Other than that, you know, that's what we were requesting.
So there is another requirement for you when the building is finished, and I should mention as well, as I'm with the rest of the board here, but I think it's a pretty awesome idea, and I think Tuxbury would be lucky to have such an operation here. So, you know, we're not trying to, you know, we're just trying to get the thing done right. So the inspection ports, where would those be located on the lot?
So on each end of the system, there's going to be an inspection port, so you can just see down into the system.
So you'd say each end, one on the street side and one on the backside of the building?
Yeah, there would be one, there's one here already, and there would be another one put in here.
Now, are some of those are parking areas beside the building there, or?
That's correct.
Yes. So the trucks that have to go in there to inspect those and clean them, and the suck trucks, I guess you may call them.
Vacuum trucks.
Yeah, the vacuum trucks may, will they have the same difficulty getting back to those ports as a fire truck would, or, because you initially?
No.
No? So they're going to be able to access those ports for cleaning?
Yes, they will.
Okay. Most of what I saw on the fire department's report, I mean, I think that that is all pretty much just building code.
Right, yeah.
Material that's a little out of our scope there, I think, but it's nice to have them comment on it as well. And I think it sounds to me, Mr. Chairman, that you have a little bit more work to do. I would like to see you back here in a couple of weeks with some of these items checked off. I personally wouldn't have a problem with one or two conditions, but there's just too many right at this moment.
Sure. And it sounds as though we are being continued this evening, from the sounds of it. And if we do that, I like to be put at the end of the agenda. I have a zoning board of appeals meeting in Lowell that evening, which typically they start earlier at 6:30, and just running into a conflict for that meeting on the 23rd.
The only, the only heads up I will give you is, as of right now, our next week, our next meeting is blank.
Oh.
So the end is the beginning.
Yeah, okay.
So if anything else that was.
Nothing else can come in.
I mean, I can only talk so slow. So I think we're kind of stuck as far as where you're going to be on the agenda. So I don't know, we'll have to try to figure that out, I guess, but.
Sure.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, we have one other continuation tonight, so we can at least push you behind that one.
Okay.
But I don't know how much room that's going to give, all right?
Sure.
All right. So, Mr. Duffy, did you have anything else?
That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
So the only thing, you know, I might reiterate any of the sort of the hangups here, but I, just to the point of the conditional approvals, we've made it fairly clear over a long point of time at this, you know, till now, that we're trying to not do those anymore. I don't mind doing it when we're stuck with something, that's fine. But just, you know, I mean, that's not, we're not doing that, people aren't questioning that for this project as much as it is we've been trying to consistently not approve things with conditions, because we were asked to stop approving things with conditions, basically. And then the feelings of everybody up here that we prefer not to do that, because once we close things and we're done, something comes up, we can't start, we can't reopen it, we can't deal with it. So we want to be done with everything we need to be done with before we do that. That being said, I mean, obviously, this system is a bit of a strange situation, because, you know, as I read, you know, Mr. Hardeman's number three, the only way to deal with this is to pull it up, check it out, put it back. You know, at least from his, from what he's writing, I'm not sure what the alternative to that is other than that. So that seems to be where you've landed, which is, you're going to have to pull it up so they can expect it going back in the ground. Is that accurate?
That's, yeah, that's what he's saying, yes.
Okay. So obviously, the, you know, if that's, that's where you sort of end up, is one of the last things, and I can understand if that's, you know, if you and he are kind of on the same page with that just simply being how it's going to be. Because the alternative, I guess, would be holding this whole thing off indefinitely until it gets pulled up out of the ground, checked out and put back, which doesn't make sense.
I can just design a separate drainage system without it.
Mr. Chair, that was going to be my question, like.
Oh, yeah, I can, I have sand soils on the site, I can.
That's what I'm saying, to resolve.
Yeah, I mean, that's what's essentially going to happen.
To make it a lot cleaner, I mean, you know, the labor cost of pulling that system, potential damages to the system, you don't know, I mean, but redesign, just putting a, you know, as you stated, your soils on the site and the other locations where you did the test pits versus what, doing the pits or the testing the soils underneath this structure, I mean, wouldn't it be cleaner just to install an approved system new to the site versus something that was installed illegally?
I'm going to essentially add 20 chambers to the system that's additional.
To cover the volume of the.
Just to, just to cover the drainage, and then, and then, and then deal with the system that's in however way the owner wants to deal with it, and Kevin Hardeman, whether it gets removed and crushed or.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just trying to clarify, I think it's the cleanest way to do it. You know, it's, you know, it's a new site, new structure, meets current, the new current emission guidelines.
It does.
That, that structure is in question, so it makes it a lot easier for this board to bless something that has been proposed and approved by Mr. Hardeman. As you stated, you did soil samples at the front in those other locations, so obviously you have the sandy soils that can handle the additional chambers.
Oh, yeah. It can handle the system that's on there, it's just, he is, which I don't disagree with him, but he just has not, he has seen every system that's gone in the ground, so. But in this particular case, we're not trying to gain infiltration credit for the system, we're just using the volume.
Sure.
As the, as part of the drainage calculation, so.
Yeah, it's just, Mr. Hardeman is, you know, signing off on the state permit that he or his staff has visually inspected everything from said point.
Yeah, understood.
That's a tough, that's tough to say, well, you know, I haven't seen this going, and it just goes back to why it wasn't installed. Obviously, you didn't hear this, but why this was installed without proper permits, understanding that anything that was going to go on this site was going to have to come in front of the board and meet the new stormwater guidelines.
Yeah, what, the guidelines haven't changed from when it went into now for the part that's in question.
They obviously didn't, they didn't do the investigation to go to the board or to go to the DPW and approve them through the town engineer, or this would be a moot point, would be like, okay, you can take those, the credit for that, and you probably wouldn't need the front chamber or the back chamber.
Yeah, so.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, that's fine. All right. So, yeah, so I think there's, you know, just, there's a bit more of sort of ducks in a row necessary between now and the next meeting to get everybody up here more comfortable, I think. That's where I think you are.
So I'm going to say this, then, I guess we'll go to the June meeting, because when we submit plans, we don't get them until the Friday before the meeting. So I'd like to request that we do these plans this week. When the engineer has time to review the plans, that's great, but I'd like him to review the plans as if the meeting was on the 23rd, so that.
Well, how about do this, then? Why don't we make it the 23rd?
Yeah, we'll.
And then that way, it is what it is, and then if, and just in case there's the possibility that your Lowell meeting, for some reason, their board doesn't have quorum and decides not to meet, then you can still come here. If you can't, then we'll continue it. But I think if you push to June.
That's fine, I just.
That's when everybody knows you're coming, and then you're going to get reviewed that way.
So we'll go to the 23rd.
All right. Okay. So with that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the board. What is the pleasure, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fowler?
Thank you. Mr. Hammer, I have one more question.
Sure.
You stated very, a while ago, that you had a hearing or a meeting with the town engineer's staff, I imagine. One person, the staff, or what?
The meeting when? What meeting?
About the drainage.
Oh, way back when the initial concept was proposed?
Yes.
Yeah, we had, I can't recall if it was an in-person meeting, it might have been virtual at the time, if I'm not mistaken. It was in, sometime in 2021. We sent the town engineer a plan. We were making sure that the concept was going to potentially be an avenue for an approval, so we sent them a preliminary plan showing the unit itself designed on the property. We wanted to make sure that there wasn't any land disturbance permits necessary if the structure was installed. That was concurred through email for that particular aspect of the structure itself, and then the property owner did put the structure in on his own accord last summer.
Okay, so at that time, the town, through the engineer's office, understood that it was either in the ground or was going in the ground?
I'm not going to say what the town was viewing the structure, they were just looking at a set of plans for the concept, for utilizing the concrete structure as a drainage.
So they didn't know it was going in the ground or was in the ground?
Oh, no, I'm sure, it's my understanding that the town engineer was not notified that the structure was going in the ground.
So at this time, who, did you, your staff meet with them, or did you meet with them or talk to them virtually or whatever?
The town engineer?
Yeah.
I just can't recall here now to answer that question, Mr. Fowler. I do know that this course.
My last question is this. For your file, when you're going, you're presenting your case, did you have, did you receive a letter or minutes of this meeting, or any answer in a letter form about this?
Again, I have to go back and look at whatever it was that was put in writing, be it from the town engineer or CC with the town planner at the time, just having the discussion about the proposed concept.
Okay. I would like to see that, and I'm sure you would like to see that, too.
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question as well?
Are you, also, Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. So just my understanding of this, of this unit that was installed without a permit and so on and so forth, and then obviously we're trying to work it into the, into the new engineering plans somehow. What are we talking here for a, for a unit, for a tank size? Where are we looking at it?
So.
On the side of the plan, this unit is shown here, there's essentially a bridge abutment in the shape of a T. There's one here, and there's one here.
What size, I think? Just give me a rough, roughly.
Are we talking 50 feet or 100 feet?
Like 50 feet each.
Okay.
There's four.
And how tall are they?
They're like, three feet.
Yeah, so, I mean, it just seems like that there's a lot of dancing around, trying to avoid, it seems like that they were put in without permit. You know, somebody's trying to say, my God, I spent money on this, and I'd like to be able to use these, and that would be wonderful if there was a way for you and the engineer to kind of work something out there in that regard. But short of that, it just still doesn't seem like a big deal to me to, you know, dig it out.
Put it back in.
Pull it out of there, do your test, put it back in.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, I just, I'm curious now, I wasn't as curious as I am now, about what the heck is going on here with this, with this.
I'm not going to speak on behalf of the owner.
Okay.
Sir, so, you know, I just have to respect what I have in front of me.
Sure.
And do what, do what we need to do in terms of satisfying the town, in terms of what's being proposed in the project.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So with that, do we have a motion to continue this to 7:05 on May 23rd? A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Brings us to agenda item D, and the.
Thank you.
Applicant here has also requested to be moved to our May 23 meeting. So can I get a motion to move 160 and 170 River Road to 7 o'clock?
Sure.
So have a motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And that brings us to agenda item E, 85 French Street. This is continued from our April 25 meeting as well.
Yes.
Yes.
Andy Baum from Sherman and Friedrich, 3 Converse Street, Palmer, Massachusetts. Um, continuation of a stormwater management plan for a major land disturbance permit at 85 French Street. If you look at the presentation plan, uh, French Street is located on the, uh, kind of plan southeast of that, the limit of disturbance is shown in the lighter celery color. It's a single-family home, five-bedroom home for, uh, people with disabilities, some additional parking shown to the back. Uh, there was a series of comments, comments from the DPW regarding the drainage system, um, that we touched upon on our last hearing. Since that time, we performed the soil testing, um, added some additional storage in the drainage basin located, uh, planned northeast of the parking area, um, added some additional erosion control measures, particularly along the plan south, where the slope is being pulled back to improve the site distance. Um, there was some other minor commentary on, uh, plan notes, et cetera, that we revised. We received a letter from the DPW on Friday confirming that we met all their stormwater requirements, um, they have a couple more things related to, uh, the driveway, which we'll go over with them. Um, I tried to make some of the plan revisions, uh, based on some of their verbal commentary, including sliding the driveway approximately three feet to what would be planned east to help on some of that cutback. It's essentially, if you went out there, it's essentially in the same location as the existing driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if the board has any other questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
All right, so, just before I open it up, just so, you know, everybody at home, because this was a, you know, kind of a well-attended hearing when it first started, um, you know, this is a pretty limited vote for us, in what we can do and what we can't do, um, it's kind of, sort of a little bit along the lines of the A and R plans, in that you either meet what we need or you don't, and that's sort of the end of it for us, this isn't really one of our, it's like our site plan.
Correct.
Special permit and whatnot, so everybody understands that, and just to clarify with you, because I think you just touched on it, you're aware that the engineer department has pointed out to you some things that.
Correct.
You won't be able to go forward without dealing with, separate and distinct from whether we grant you a disturbance.
Correct, and I, I let the, uh, property owner and the contractors who are working on it know that they've got some concerns when they go to pull the land disturbance permit.
Okay.
And, just for the edification of the board, too, um, the revised plans, there was some commentary particularly from the, um, the residents that will be planned north, we added some abreviated shading to go and kind of plant the understory on that, to provide some screening, and, um, a fence was added around the drainage basin as well for the, for the protection of the, of the residents, they're going to be using that property.
All right, very good. Still, Mr. Rada?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I was just looking at Mr. Hardeman's questions, but, uh, as you stated, you know, what we do is going to be, still continue upon meeting those requirements with the town engineer, so, seems to be, um, you're meeting the yard of, and you'll still have to work with them to get that done, but I'm, uh, good for now, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fattalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, yeah, I know, this is usually a slam dunk when we come in, but, uh, it's been going on for a little while, but, uh, I'm glad to find out that it's come, finally come to, uh, you know, an agreement between the parties and so forth and so on, so, um, I'm glad Mr. Hardeman and you are working together, sometimes it doesn't work out that way, but, you know, um, I'm all in favor of the project, and I think, you know, like anything, working together works better than apart, so, uh, with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, looks, uh, looks good.
Mr. Duffy?
Uh, and I, and I agree with, uh, with, uh, with my colleague chair, it looks like that you've addressed the, uh, the water flow concerns that, uh, that the engineer had, you know, you're, you're pitching the driveway, um, you know, so that, you know, the majority of your runoff is, is, uh, going into the grass rail.
Mm-hmm.
That you have there, which is, which is probably a pretty nice idea, and, uh, other than that, I have no concerns.
All right, Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I want to thank you for the presentation and, uh, the understanding of it, and it's a lot, I have good feelings about this, not like the, never mind.
All right.
Um, no, I'm all set, to be honest with you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you.
The chair is all set as well, um, just a note, uh, because it's, it's on here, just a reminder, this one's a three-fifths.
Yes.
It's not a super.
Yep.
I'll open up to the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, and concerns, seeing that there is no one in the audience, I don't think there will be, uh, with that, we'll bring it back to the board, was the pleasure of the board.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the hearing.
All right, motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. As to the land disturbance permit.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, good luck.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
All right, that takes care of E. That brings us to old business, is there any old business anyone wishes to discuss at this time? No? All right, so, new business, new business.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, I probably should have mentioned this as committee reports, uh, but, uh, the, uh, building at, uh, the old school administration building, uh, as many people have seen, that, uh, remediation has been underway, and that will start to, uh, come down, so, um, just so people are aware of the progress of what the school project.
Excellent, uh, any other new business?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to, uh, let the board know that I did, uh, I did, uh, have some contact with, with NEMCAG, and I'll be attending my first meeting, uh, on the 18th.
All right, very good. The only, I will, I guess it's, oh, it's new business, but just a note, everybody's, does everybody get these, or just me?
Everybody.
Okay, so just, just everybody's got this, pulled onto it?
Yes.
It's new, it's good reference for us, maybe we'll keep it in, in our hands for a little while.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I did ask Alex to put those together, so.
Oh, thank you.
Don't accidentally put them in the recycling on the way out. Um, that's it for new business, correspondence?
I have, I have a comment, Mr.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fattalia?
Just, uh, as an announcement, Mr. Chairman, um, on Saturday, May 14th, the, uh, letter carriers are doing their annual food drive in Tewksbury and across the country, so, um, I know it's been a great success over the years, uh, food pantry could use the food as well, so if you could place your non-perishable food items by the, um, your mailbox, the letter carrier will come by and, uh, pick up those food items and drop them to the food pantry, where the staff down there will process the food and have it on, 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 uh, on their shelves for the needy people of Tewksbury.
Mr. Fattalia, I don't know if you know, I don't know if you had any answer to this question, I mean, non-perishable is non-perishable, so anything qualifies, but is there anything in particular that they seek? Oh.
I actually.
Ms. Lada has an answer.
Go ahead, if you have.
Oh, great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I actually also work with the, um, with the food pantry, um, I was providing, helping to provide through the MSPCA, um, pet food to them during the pandemic, so I've, I've kind of gotten to know them, and they look for a lot of individually wrapped things, um, because, you know, somebody brings in a huge jar of peanut butter, but a lot of the people who come to the pantry as clients are seniors or single people, so they can't do anything with a gigantic box of cereal, so, they have, um, mentioned to me in the past, like, if you bring in big boxes of, the 40 packs of granola bars, or other individually, um, packaged items, they find those to be very useful.
All right, very good.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, also, they, um, they'll take anything, but what they don't want is expired food.
Yes.
In my years of collecting food in, at the Arlington location, people would empty their shelves, you know, and they'd be giving us a bag of food, you know, but the food pantry staff in Arlington and all that, and I'm sure in Tewksbury as well, they process the food, they look at all the expiration dates, and they do have to get rid of a lot of food.
Non-perishable has its limits.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, but you wouldn't know that, because, because of some of the donations, I don't, I mean, I'm not against donations, and I think it's great, but, you know, if you can be discreet about giving them good food, rather than just food that you want to get